Each of the candidates will have some time to introduce themselves. So each candidate will have a two-minute introductory time. We'll start from the left to the right. So they'll have two minutes. Then we'll start the questions. We'll select those randomly. Again, you still have time to submit a question if you like. We will start asking the questions on the left side of the stage. So the candidates will answer those. The first person who answers the question will have two minutes to answer the question, and then the additional candidates will have one minute to follow up with their answers as well. The candidates' seating arrangement was identified through a process of selecting numbers, so they were given their numbers that way. With each question, we'll start with a different candidate. So we'll start with number one on the left side of the stage with the first question. The next question will be the next speaker or the next candidate, and so forth, and we'll continue to rotate that way. When we're done with the responses to the questions, as we're getting close to the end of time or wrapping up questions, there will be an opportunity for each candidate to provide a closing statement, and they will be going from right to left. With any of the questions that we asked this evening, when folks have had their chance to respond, but they want to offer some additional information or they want to rebut, they can turn their name plates around and request a rebuttal. We'll accept two of those per question. So they'll turn those plates around. We'll allow them to rebut, and they will have time to rebut at that time. Grateful to have a timekeeper this evening. Julie Johnson from League of Women Voters is here to keep time. She has signs that will indicate how much time each response has left. Are there -- oh, any of the questions that we don't get to this evening will be posted at EmporiaGazette.com. So if there are additional questions that we don't have time for, you can find those there. And remember, we're selecting them at random, so there's no particular order for the questions. Do any of the candidates or anyone in the audience have any questions about the way the forum will work? Alrighty, well, let's get started. Again, there's still time if you want to submit a question. Alright. We'll start with Mr. Harmon, candidate number one.
Is the official timer ready? Okay, great. Hi, my name is Steve Harmon. I'm currently a city commissioner for the city of Emporia, and I'm seeking reelection for the city commission. The best way to describe who I am is in some simple titles. I'm a husband, I'm a father, I am an entrepreneur, business owner, an educator, and a soldier. And another thing that I'm very proud of, I'm also a volunteer. I've had the chance to live in Emporia for over 20 years, start several businesses with my wife that have been pretty successful. We're proud to have invested in Emporia. But I think the best part about living in Emporia is this is a great community to raise our family, and we do have three children in the education system. We're very proud to have chosen Emporia and not to have been recruited to come to Emporia. One of the things I would look forward to as running for the office of city commissioners is to continue the partnerships we've had with our local organizations. The city commission is only five individuals. It takes a great city staff, which we currently have. It takes great organizations to make economic development as well as the services to happen. And I'm hoping to have the opportunity to serve you. I know that votes are not given, they're earned. I hope I've earned your respect, your trust, and a chance to serve again so we can work with those organizations to continue to improve and grow Emporia. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mendoza, your opening statement, please.
My name is Dolores Mendoza. I'm born and raised in Emporia. I have lived here for 45 years. I am a mother, a single parent. I have a son, a daughter, and a grandson who all live with me. I work for Dr. Barton and Thompson as a dental assistant. I have worked there for seven years. I also sell Mary Kay, and I clean houses where I live. I guess that's pretty much about it for right now.
Thank you. Mr. Wade.
My name is Kelly Wade, and I'm running for city commission. I've lived here my whole life, all 43 years. I'm a graduate from Emporia State University. I'm a small business owner as a financial advisor of Waddell &amp; Reed. I have a strong passion for the community and want to make it better. I want to represent all of Emporia, and I just would like things to continue to get better and for us to grow.
Thank you. Mr. Gilligan.
Good evening. First, I'd like to welcome everybody to thank you for coming out and spending some time to get to know the city commission candidates. As Ms. Davis said, my name is Rob Gilligan. I'm currently a member of the Emporia City Commission. Was born and raised here in Emporia, grew up, went to Emporia State University, and graduated with a communication degree from Emporia State University, work here locally with the My Town Media Stations. And have really enjoyed the last four years that I've had to work with the Emporia City Commission and really see growth and opportunities within our community, within the organization of the city, as a structural organization serving the community and some of the positive things that we've been able to implement and grow, like our new recycling program which we'll be launching here in just eight short weeks, and many other programs. Like Steve had said, we feel very confident that we've got a great leadership team and a great partnership in the community, in the leadership of the city of Emporia and our relationships we have with other organizations. And I look forward to the opportunity to continue that. Building relationships in our community is a great opportunity for us to grow. You're all here because you care about Emporia, which I think is great. You're spending time on your Thursday evening here, learning about these candidates, or watching at home via the Emporia Gazette livestream, and your interest in the community hopefully will be echoed by the commissioners that you elect to want to improve and grow the city of Emporia and our surrounding area. It's great to be the hub, it's great to be the regional leader, and we have great opportunities here, and I hope that we can continue to make those opportunities stronger in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Milner.
My name is Bobby Milner. I was elected to the city commission in 2011, completing my first four-year term. I hope to be able to serve again. It's something I've enjoyed enormously. I am retired. My background was that I was a reporter and former city editor for the Emporia Gazette, and I worked in international marketing at Diddy Web Press and as public affairs supervisor in charge of fundraising and marketing for TFI Family Services, among other things. Now I'm freelance writing primarily for Emporia State University, but I am officially retired. I look back at what we've accomplished during the last four years, and I'm pleased with what has happened. I think we're seeing more community involvement. I think we're seeing more enthusiasm, more willingness to try to become involved in the community. We have a new management team in place at the city that I think is doing an outstanding job leading and getting people to come together cohesively to work together for the community. We're now working on a five-year budget, so we can anticipate from year to year what we believe is going to happen. It's not that there's not going to be things crop up that surprise us, but we are trying to plan ahead for the needs that are major that we're going to have to make expenditures for. We've initiated a property improvement enforcement program that has been successful. A lot of properties have either been improved or demolished with very little complaints from the public, so I think that we've approached that in a kind, helpful way, and it's probably making a large difference in the way our community looks now. We also have a vacant property ordinance that we're trying to encourage people to go ahead and improve their properties, whether or not they're occupied or not, and there are certain restrictions that you must conform to to be able to continue in that vein. So I think that we've made a lot of progress. We've had a lot of jobs come back into the community, and I think things are looking up. Thank you.
Mr. Kiesler.
I'm Christian Kiesler, and I am running for city commission. This will be my third time running. I just want to say that I think this is truly the first time that I am prepared for the position. I've done a lot more in the community, been more involved. Recently was at the Emporia Chamber of Commerce where I did marketing and media relations for the convention, Visitors Bureau. Since I have moved over to Dynamic Discs, which is a growing company in Emporia, and we're looking for more expansion in the future. So it's definitely something to be aware of. You know, Emporia's working towards many goals, and a lot of goals that need a diverse commission to really push through, and I think I'm that candidate to help make that more diverse, bring a different perspective and more youth to it. And I think that as a community, we can really come together and push, being more of a community together, with me being fair and accountable. Again, thank you for coming out. It means a lot that you guys have taken the time out of your day to really come and show your support for the candidates and make sure that you know which candidates you want to vote for. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. That concludes the introductory remarks. We will now move on to questions. Again, these are randomly selected. We'll start with candidate one, Mr. Harmon. He will have two minutes to answer the question, and each additional candidate will have a minute. If you want to rebut after you've had a chance to speak, you can turn your sign and you will have additional time. We'll accept up to two rebuttals for each question. So, Mr. Harmon, question number one. What will you do to attract high-paying professional jobs to Emporia?
One of the things I talked about in the publication that we put out before this event was the diversity that we needed to have in our economic development programs. If you think about your personal portfolios, if you have a portfolio or your personal goals, you do not want to put all of your eggs in one basket. You do not want to be what's called overweighted. Did I say that correct, Kelly? You're the financial guy, so you don't want to have everything overweighted into one area. We are very heavily weighted in industry, so we feel the pains and the growth when industry is up or when industry is down. So the question asks, how do we diversify and how do we bring higher-paying jobs? If you're studying, if you're looking at the economy of the 21st century, we are no longer in the traditional white-collar, blue-collar, gold-collar job market. We now have what's called the remote economy and the contractor economy. Those higher-paying jobs are not necessarily through an organization or through a company. Many of those individuals are now individual contractors, or they're working for a company that may be in another state or a country, but they can live anywhere they want to. That's the nature of the economy. As a gigabit community, we have the resources, we have the family lifestyle, we have the beauty of the Emporia area and the Flint Hills to draw folks to our community that are contract workers, are online workers, are remote workers. That's where we need to start. It's not easy, it's not cheap, but it actually gives us more diversity as far as our economic development portfolio, and we won't have to go through the population spikes, decreases, the wage increases, the wage decreases, and the issues that come with being so heavily weighted on just the industrial component. Thank you.
Ms. Mendoza, what will you do to attract high-paying professional jobs to Emporia?
I think we need to research some companies that are out there so we can bring someone here to Emporia. Emporia is a family community. It's a small community, but there's a lot of potential out for all people. I think everyone needs to get educated on a lot of different things. With our minimum wage right now, it's pretty low, so it's kind of hard to attract people to come to Emporia to, you know, have a low-paying job. So we need something that's going to come here and is going to benefit all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Wade, how would you attract high-paying professional jobs to Emporia?
I would work at strengthening our relationship with Emporia State and Flint Hills Technical College and maybe look at attracting -- they're an employee factory, and we could look at attracting industries for the employees, like an accounting firm or things like that to help, as Steve said, diversify our -- so we don't have all our eggs in one basket.
Mr. Gilligan, what would you do to attract high-paying jobs to Emporia?
I really think one of the key factors we must discuss as we're looking to recruit and grow industry, and specifically high-paying type jobs in the community, is we've got to build the community that those individuals and those jobs want to have. And so ironically, a lot of times we think about economic development in the terms of recruiting a business and building a business up, but building a strong community with good infrastructure, with great school systems, with a great arts community, a great entertainment district or an entertainment community creates the type of environment that those individuals running those companies, growing those companies, and developing those companies want to be a part of. That's the trick that Emporia has and the niche that we can have, is we can be a community that people want to be a part of by being unique, being individual, and giving them something that they want to experience. If we want to attract those high-paying jobs to our community, we've got to give them something in return. Not a cash incentive, not a free building, but a community that they want to be a part of.
Ms. Milner, what would you do to attract high-paying professional jobs to Emporia?
I think it's something that we have to approach methodically. I think we need to look and see what the good jobs are going to be within the next 20, 10 to 20 years. Those projections are available. I think we need to look and see if there's a way where we can accommodate that, how we can attract it. Very likely, there could be some cooperation between Emporia State University or the Flint Hills Technical College in bringing some of those companies here. I know that we've taken a new approach to the way that we're looking at economic development. We're looking at it in a more broad perspective, and we're also, as far as our RDA goes, beginning to look at things individually through specialized eyes for Emporia rather than using the Kansas Department of Commerce to bring in people to talk to cities all across the state. We're not competing necessarily against those Kansas cities as we had been in the past. We're looking individually for things that are right for Emporia and working to get them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kiesler, what would you do to attract high-paying jobs to Emporia?
Economic development is definitely something that's difficult for all communities to do. Definitely when you're competing against all communities of all sizes, you definitely want to promote those things that are unique to you and unique to others. So definitely promoting the quality of life that we have here in Emporia, maintaining the infrastructure and increasing it, and showing our uniqueness in our family-oriented events that we have. The Dirty Kansas, the Disc Golf that we have here is something that we can really use to bring the communities together and show off to businesses looking to come to town. So other than the incentives, obviously incentives are definitely a good way to bring those businesses to town, but we got to look at other things to do.
Alright, we're going to move on to the next question, and Ms. Mendoza will start with you. You'll have two minutes, and then each other candidate will have one minute to respond. What will you do to improve animal control, especially dog barking, dogs on the loose, and people who don't clean up after their dogs?
I feel there needs to be some type of ordinance for that. We need actually dog catchers out there, animal control officers, like we used to back in the day. They would go around and they would be available at pretty much all hours, or at least eight to five. Right now, they're only there for a few hours, so it's kind of hard for people. If there is a dog at large, you have to mainly call the police department. And there should be some type of ticket or something for, you know, dogs going in other people's yards and hitting their waste there. There needs to be some type of ordinance for that.
Mr. Wade, what will you do to improve animal control?
Well, I think we should evaluate the amount of complaints and the problems going on and look at the fine system to see if there's a way to make it so if there is enough complaints to warrant another officer for that, to make the fines help pay for the officer.
Mr. Gilligan, what will you do to improve animal control?
You know, as with most things with city operations, it usually comes down to dollars. And we know amongst the city commissioners that we've struggled probably funding the number of positions ideally we would have in our animal control organization here in the community. Recently, we've partnered with outside entities to take over management of the animal shelter, which gives us an opportunity to have a stronger, better relationship in the community with leadership. That'll hopefully allow us to shift some additional dollars towards animal control enforcement. But really, it's a partnership of the community. You know, education's a key part of it. Obviously, you have higher risk of animal control issues when we're not spaying and neutering animals in our community and we're having loose animals and an overgrowing population. That's key. We can do some things like allow dispensers for cleanup bags into our community in areas that we see animals being walked commonly, so it's a team effort.
Ms. Milner, what would you do to improve animal control?
I think we're taking a good step in the right direction by having the Lyon County Humane Society take over operation of the shelter, because that is going to bring in additional funds. They have capabilities as a fundraiser that the city of Emporia simply does not have other than raising property taxes, so that is something that's going to help us enormously. The Buck Fund is very active in spaying and neutering, and Emporia Friends of the Animal Shelter also are working, so we have kind of a three-pronged approach from individual non-charities working on this. Spaying and neutering is going to be key. We have talked about, and I hope we keep promoting, spaying and neutering any animal that comes into the shelter after 48 hours, because that's one way we're going to end this problem, is by not having so many litters of puppies and kittens. And also, there is a leash law that applies to dogs and cats. We need to educate people about that, because they are not aware that if you have your cat out, it has to be on the leash too, just like a dog, or under your control. Thank you.
Mr. Kiesler, what would you do to improve animal control?
As I found out today, we currently do not have an animal control person on staff for the last two months, so I'd hate to see us not put someone into place anytime -- I'm sorry. I'd like to see someone put into place in the near future. It's definitely something that we don't need to have. There's a lot of strays on the streets, and I think it plays into part of our quality of life, and seeing that many dogs and cats on the streets doesn't look good for our community. It paints a bad picture for us. So I think I'd hate to see it go to strictly publicly funded. I'd like to see some city assistance there, but it's definitely an issue that we need to solve quick.
Mr. Harmon, what would you do to improve animal control?
I think Commissioner Gilligan and Commissioner Milner did a good job of answering that question. The only thing I could add to that is, it does come down to dollars. We do know that we have to get another animal control person on staff, and we are working well with the Humane Society as well as the Buck Fund and other volunteers to reduce the costs. We don't just have a domesticated animal problem. We do have a large farm population in the city of Emporia now. You just have to drive around in the mornings and you'll hear them. But the issue is, not whether you believe they should be in town or out of town, the issue is, how do you enforce any ordinance that we have? The ordinances are on the books. There are moratoriums. These are issues that we have to find funding for. Believe it or not, this is something that dominates a major portion of our time, and we know that we have to continue to improve in this area. Thank you.
Alright, we'll move to the next question, and it goes to Mr. Wade. As a member of the commission, what will you do to support getting Amtrak back to Emporia?
I would be willing to look to see what grants were available to help fund it. I think that it's a pretty big expenditure, so I would like to see a way, find a way to fund it without using taxpayer dollars right now.
Mr. Gilligan, what would you do to support bringing Amtrak back to Emporia?
You know, having an Amtrak station back in Emporia would certainly be a great opportunity for the community and create a nice outlet for some additional travel options. But, you know, Kelly makes a good point. The expense is pretty high. When you think about the level of participation that we would be expected to see in our community for it, it would be a pretty significant cost if there was some outside support, private funding, grants that could help us with that. Additionally, we have the somewhat of a unique problem that we're along the main line of Burlington Northern Santa Fe, and so making sure that it's a good working relationship with them. Their priority is to remove freight. That's their priority for the lines that they own and they pay for through our community. And to really make Amtrak successful, we've got to make sure we can find a right location that would make it succeed. It's going to take a little bit of work, and hopefully we can find some success in the future.
Ms. Milner, what would you do to support bringing Amtrak back to Emporia?
I think we need to look into it more deeply than what we have. We have an estimate on the cost of a station down on Commercial Street, and it was around $800,000, and that's probably doable. But on the other hand, we have to get cooperation from Amtrak. There has to be a willingness to stop here, and there has to be a time that's going to be useful to people who want to be passengers on Amtrak. I understand that rail passenger service requires better track, accommodates faster speeds than what the freight does, and I have been told by Burlington Northern that it's about $1 million a mile to build that kind of track. So I don't know whether it's something that we need to look into, like Kyle Short Line Railroad in north-central Kansas seems to be relatively successful. It might be something that we would need to have a short line rather than an Amtrak connection. We'll just have to see.
Mr. Kiesler, what would you do to support bringing Amtrak back to Emporia?
This is one of those projects that's really cool to have. You'd love to see it in your downtown, but at the same time, it's not exactly feasible for us. I think that the price is definitely too high, and it's definitely not something I want to see tax dollars go to. If we can find some outside money, outside grants, that's definitely something to look into in the future. But I'd like to see some studies done to see how many people are actually riding Amtrak in the communities about our size. I think downtown would be amazing place to have it stop. Definitely get a lot more traffic that way, but it'd be nice to see how many people are actually riding Amtrak, and definitely who's riding it in the state of Kansas.
Mr. Harmon, what would you do to support bringing Amtrak back to Emporia?
There's two key issues here we have to address. We have to make sure that, as Commissioner Milner said, that we do have buy-in from BNSF and as well as the Amtrak organization. Once we get that buy-in and we can figure out actually how much this would cost us, we can't do this as a city of Emporia. It has to be done at a multi-state level, because obviously the tracks and the companies are national. And even if we go with the short line route, it's going to have to be something that we do a regional approach. One community cannot afford it, one community cannot make it happen. But I do want to commend the 30 or 40 individuals for the last seven years that have been working on this. Many things in government are frustrating and take forever. This is an example of it, and we need to keep trying, and that incremental progress will eventually get us to our goal.
Ms. Mendoza, what would you do to support bringing Amtrak back to Emporia?
Amtrak would be a good asset to Emporia, but we need to research it more, and we need to find out how it's going to be funded and if it's going to affect the taxpayers.
Alright, we'll move to the next question, and it's for Mr. Gilligan. All of the candidates have stated that they are pro-growth. How would you best measure growth and who's responsible for achieving it?
The best way to measure it, well, it depends. Obviously, increased population would be a great way to see success within our community. I would also argue that we need to see growth in our median household income. We currently rank at the bottom of the state, 104 out of 105 counties, and success with economics means growing the community. And so we don't necessarily have to have more people in Emporia, but if we can increase the value that those families generate for their households and the expenditures that they potentially have, it's successful for our community, for our local businesses, and our local economy. Who's responsible? We're all responsible. That's the truth of it. It can't be something that's expected of the city commission, it can't be something that's expected only of the county commission, of the Chamber of Commerce, of Main Street, of the RDA. It's a partnership effort that the community has to take on board with businesses, with the education institutions, with our local government agencies, partnership and support from the state agencies that can allow us to design a community that breeds success and gives opportunity for people to become successful. Entrepreneurship is one of the strongest ways we can do that. As we build personal wealth and growth within our business community here in Emporia, we'll start to see the tide grow and the numbers tick up that allows better success and better wealth, and that's what makes for a stronger community. That's what I would measure growth in, is seeing the economy grow stronger through personal wealth, and obviously through that we can attract more people, and it's got to be a team effort. If we're not all on the same team, we're not going to get very far.
Ms. Milner, how would you best measure growth and who's responsible for achieving it?
Who's responsible for what?
For achieving it.
I didn't get it.
How would you measure growth and who's responsible for achieving it?
Thank you. Got it, sorry. It is difficult to measure growth because there are so many ways to look at it. I think that we can see that we've had growth in jobs by several hundred, more jobs than we had within the last two or three years. We also see that income is rising a bit. Raises are being given at some of the local industries. We know that sales tax is up. We know that transient guest tax varies up and down depending upon how it's being paid. But I think that overall, we are going to have to work together as a cohesive unit. The RDA, the Chamber, the Emporia Main Street, CDB, and Emporia State University too, all have done studies to see how to market themselves, how to best present the city in a good light, how to make the most advantageous moves to position ourselves for more industries. And I think that we're finally finding our feet on how to get that done and how to get it done together, and I think as we do that, we're going to continue to see more job growth and more income growth. income growth.
Mr. Kiesler, how would you best measure growth and who is responsible for achieving it?
I think we're all responsible for helping in, in a way to achieve that goal. Tourism, population increase, income increase, new small business and industries and expansions. I think all those play, play a big part in, you know, making the growth of the whole. And I think once we put all those into place, we'll see a domino effect as a growth of the whole community.
Mr. Harmon, how would you best measure growth and who's responsible for achieving it?
The measurements are already out there and we share them at a regional, local, federal level. We, we see it on the news every day and it's, it's obvious things like median household income, like Commissioner Gilligan talked about, its population, its number of visitors that spend money, sales tax dollars, number of individuals that buy houses, pull permits. Those are the things that we're already tracking. And as my fellow candidates and commissioners said, everybody is responsible, but who's accountable is probably another question we should ask. The taxpayers do have a, a fund that they, that they provide to the community for economic development and we as commissioners have to be accountable to make sure that that money is properly spent and that you as the voters get an accountability or a report saying, this is what we spent it on and these are the measures we had and these are the results that came forward. Thank you.
Ms. Mendoza, how would you best measure growth and who's responsible for achieving it?
I agree with Mr. Harmon said, but also, we also, I, it's the people and the people need to get out there and vote and they're the ones who can help change, change this so we can have more growth in, in our community by them voting and putting, you know, having a, having a say on what, instead of complaining, you know, that they're making a low pay. This is one way that they can change it is by getting out there and vote.
Mr. Wade, how would you best measure growth and who's responsible for achieving it?
Well, I believe the measurements is the easy thing. It's raising the population and the household income. And one way to target it is target industries that will hire our graduates from Emporia State and the Flint Hills Tech College because if we can keep the graduates instead of them moving away, that would help both with the population and a higher income level in town.
All right, we're moving on to the next question and it goes to Ms. Milner. Name two priorities of your city commission term and why they are your top two.
Well, one of them obviously is going to be additional growth on jobs and I said we have achieved considerably more jobs than what we had when I took office four years ago. And in part, that was because of bringing back Hostess, but also VecTech and Simmons and other businesses have been on, on hiring increases recently and that has bumped up the number of people that, that have jobs. That is definitely a priority. I also would like to see us doing more work together to, to create a business that is, that is homegrown within Emporia. We have a number of businesses here that already are successful and they started right here with people who, who had a, an idea for something that would work and they, and they dedicated themselves to doing that. We had Diddy Web Press. It maybe only lasted 15, 50 years, but that's not bad for a shelf life for, for a business. Many go in and out. We have Satter Tank Company. We have Hopkins. We have a lot of little industries around that are paying well and they are increasing. They are shipping things out internationally and that's exactly what we want to see. We want to see money being spent on the products that we created here, but we want that money coming in from outside. That is what helps raise all of us, that we're not having to support them themselves here. So I really would like to see us do a homegrown industry because we do it well and I think that has the greatest potential for long-term staying power for us.
Mr. Kiesler, name two priorities of your city commission term and why they are your top two.
Obviously industrial growth is definitely going to help us with the larger population within the industries and definitely growing that would be one of the big priorities. Another one would be the downtown development projects. I think that's going to help keep the students here on the weekends, keep them here in the long run, give them something to do. I definitely push towards that. The Chelsea Lofts is a great addition. We've seen great growth with the Kellogg Lofts. When they put that in, we had new businesses come. They're full and you'll definitely see more people move to the downtown area where a lot more businesses have gone in. But we can't just focus on just one little area. We have to focus on the community as a whole, industries, small businesses and, and everything will play a big part in, in the growth.
Mr. Harmon, name the two priorities of your city commission term and why they're your top two.
The two priorities I have are current priorities of the current city commission and being an entrepreneur who started a small business and understands that struggle, I want to continue finding ways to make sure that Emporia is an entrepreneur-ready and an entrepreneur-friendly community. As Commissioner Milner said, that is where the new jobs will come from. That is where the companies that we look back on from 30 years ago will come from. The second thing I would look at is how do we continue our efforts to be as frugal and as responsible with the tax dollars we are given? The tax dollars, the tax dollars in my mind are sacred trust to make sure we spend them wisely. We have a lot of roads we have to maintain. We have water lines we have to maintain. We have utilities we have to maintain. We have public safety we have to maintain. So it's important that we look for ways to continue to be transparent, efficient and frugal with how we use tax money.
Ms. Mendoza, name your two priorities of your city commission term and why they're your, why they're your priorities.
My number one priority would be changing the minimum wage just because it hits too close to myself. The second one would be maintaining our streets and roads and making sure that Emporia is a safe place for our children to live and our community is safe.
Mr. Wade, name your two priorities of your city commission term.
Well, actually I have three. The first one is trying to increase the amount of jobs we have and better paying jobs. I also think we need to have definable metrics on our vision system because a goal like, I want to lose weight's not really definable unless you say, I want to lose 20 pounds by December 31st. You need to be able to measure it. And then the infrastructure in Emporia does need to be improved and, but we've got to do it in a way that the, we do not go over budget. So, you know, maintaining the budget's also my third goal.
Mr. Gilligan, what are your top two priorities?
The two priorities I'd have for, for a second term in office would be, one, to focus on our housing here in the community. Emporia prior to 2008, which would be 2001 through 2008, we saw an average start of 31 new homes in our community for that seven-year period. Since 2008, in the past seven years, we see an average start of nine new homes in our community. That's a third of the growth. Now, we know that obviously 2008, 2009, we see a growth or drop in our economic situation nationwide. We haven't recovered, but now it's starting to show itself in the fact that our housing market is tightening, especially at the top with homes above $150,000. Without those homes for people to move into, we can't see new home opportunities for new home investors or we can't recruit people from outside of our community to come in. Housing's got to be a top priority. Secondly is our most important economic engine exists at the very end of the street that's right outside, 1200 Commercial Street. We've got to show support and dedication to ESU, especially in light of current situations and state budgeting and how that's going to have an impact locally. 800 employees, 4,500 students, that's key to Emporia's growth.
All right, next question goes to Mr. Kiesler. Do you think our economic development strategy and implementation is as good as it can be? And if not, what would you change?
Man, that's a hard one. Obviously there's always things that you can change when you're going after businesses and it's a tough one to go after. Every community out there is searching for the same piece of the pie. They all want those industries. They all want those, those businesses come to their community. So definitely looking at the incentives that you're offering per, per industry, not giving the same incentives to every one of them. But, you know, there's always something you can definitely do to change. I think they're doing a great job, but definitely looking towards the future, there's always going to be something that you need to do differently. So, you know, as times do change, definitely change the strategies that you're using in, in seeking those businesses and not always having them come to you.
Mr. Harmon, does the economic development strategy need improvement or what would you change?
I may have answered this earlier, but I do want to see diversification of our economic development planning. Are we entrepreneur-ready? Are we entrepreneur-friendly? Are we making inroads into the populations that are contractors, individual workers and the remote workforce? We have a great community. We have a beautiful community. We have a place to raise a family with a great school system, a two-year technical college, a four-year university, the Flint Hills to our west, easy access to anywhere in the country due to our location. So we have great talent and opportunities that many cities would love to have. So let's diversify our plan. Let's be entrepreneur-ready and friendly and let's go after that remote workforce.
Ms. Mendoza, do we need to improve our economic development strategy and if so, what would you change?
I don't think I would change anything. We do have good schools here and we have the college and the technical college also. I just feel like we all just need to work together to help build Emporia.
Mr. Wade, do you think the economic development strategy is as good as it can be? And if not, what would you do to change?
Well, I always think every plan can be better. There's no such thing as a perfect plan. So like Steve said, being more diverse in our economy and the industries we have here is the way to go.
Mr. Gilligan, do we need to make improvements to the economic development strategy and what would you change if we need to?
I think every organization begins a good planning year, a good planning period, knowing that they've got to change. Obviously things change in our communities on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis. So if we think that we can continue to do the same thing every year that we did the year previous and expect different results, then, then we're obviously fooling ourselves. So we've got to look for new opportunities that make Emporia unique as far as economic development goes and find those opportunities that we want to excel in the community. We make a lot of great efforts in industrial recruitment and development in the community. We can't give that up. That's an important part and a key function of our community and employing jobs. But that also can't be 100% of our focus. We also have to look at the necessary tools we need to recruit, other opportunities, what you may traditionally call white collar jobs or gray collar jobs. Steve mentioned earlier the idea of remote access being a gigabit community. We've got a lot of great tools in place in our community. What we need to do is figure out how to put it all together in a package and use that as a recruitment tool.
Ms. Milner, do you think the economic development strategy is as good as it can be? And if not, what would you change?
I think that we've already changed our approach to how we're recruiting industries and, and looking for new businesses. It's become just more than a, than a routine. Here's your package from the state. This business is interested in X number of employees in this place. Do you want to compete for it? I think we're taking a more individualistic approach. We're having a firm that's looking for things that are particularly appropriate for Emporia. But the next layer I would like to see is add is not just a, a part about having our incentives in place and, and what we have for the workforce. I want to see people going out who are actually community, lifelong community supporters who are well aware of the quality of life advantages that we have here because we have many of them, many, many. And I also would like to see plant managers or maybe human resources people going out with our RDA to talk with the people, let them know that we have a workforce that its quality just cannot be beaten. And I think that we can help sell our community better than we have in the past and that's, that's probably what's key for us.
Thank you. Well, we've had six questions. Each of you have had a chance to answer first and we're, we're out of questions. So I'm going to give you each an opportunity to wrap up. I believe three. Okay, so each of you has three minutes for a closing statement and we'll start, we'll start on the right side, move, move left. Mr. Kiesler.
Again, I want to thank everybody for coming out today. It's really, it means a lot to me and I'm sure everybody else up here that you came out and really wanted to know the questions and what we have to say about it. You know, I don't think Emporia is lacking in any ideas whatsoever, but I think it is lacking in the leadership of pushing those ideas forward. And I think that we can really, you know, make changes with a more diverse, sorry, commission and definitely know your commissioners before you go out and vote and definitely push your friends, your neighbors and your family to get out there and vote and help them know who the commissioners are and the candidates are. But again, thank you very much for coming out.
Ms. Milner, your closing statement.
Well, I do appreciate your appearing here tonight because I know it takes up your Thursday evening. Excuse me. I think that we've made a great deal of progress over the last four years and I see that we are going to be making more. I think we have so many assets. We have a downtown that just cannot be beaten. You drive downtown and it is absolutely gorgeous. You come to this theater, it's wonderful. Brian Williams has entertainment here week after week after week and it's all worth seeing. We have the Art Center. We have these wonderful little stores downtown, particularly Sweet Granada, that is absolutely unique to Emporia. We have so much to sell ourselves on and so much to be proud of. We have a university that is just constantly in the news, whether it's academics or athletics. We have ever-expanding Flint Hills Technical College. They're working with whatever companies need to have certain employees. They work to get those people trained and in the job. VecTech's a good example of that. They sell internationally and they need the CNC operators. Tech College supplies that. We are working together so much better, I believe, and I think that we can do even better than what we have done. I do think things are brightening up for Emporia and, thank you. I hope that if you can't vote for me, please vote anyway. That's the most important thing that we can do is just get out and cast our ballots and, and get our government in place. Thank you.
Mr. Gilligan.
Real quick, I want to thank all the organizations responsible for hosting these events and giving the commission candidates an opportunity to speak to the community. So thank you very much for Main Street League of Women Voters, the Emporia Chamber of Commerce, the Emporia Gazette for the livestream. I think that's a great opportunity for those that maybe couldn't attend. And, and thank you guys for taking time out of your schedules to come and learn more about all six of the candidates and about some of the issues affecting Emporia. I always think about the community and think about different things and, you know, people are always your worst, you're always your own worst critic. You, you sit there and you, and you see your own shortcomings, your own failure and communities are no different. You know, we sit in our own community and we see what we lack. You know, the, the first thing you notice are the streets that do have potholes in them or where the cracks are or where the sidewalk needs repaired. I always love encouraging people, spend time in Emporia at events and activities that we have, some of the, some of the greatest in the state that draw people in and out. Whenever your excitement for our community starts to wane, I promise you, spend a little bit of time with somebody that's not from Emporia and, and your battery will fill up just like that. Every single time we see new visitors to our community, everyone I meet can't talk about how amazing our community are, how great the people are, how diverse our community looks, how great the community looks. It's, it's such a fulfilling part. I'm really proud to be part of Emporia. I'm really proud to be from Emporia and it's something that I, I really enjoy representing, whether I'm here on the city commission or I'm out traveling and enjoying my time, you know, outside of the community. Emporia's a great community to be a part of and we have such great opportunities in the future. We've all been here and I look around the room knowing the individuals that showed up here on a Thursday night are the same individuals that continue to put their time, their effort and their support into making this a better community. So I want to say thank you to you folks, first of all. By being informed, by being educated, by participating, Emporia constantly becomes better. In 10 days, three of us will be elected to serve you on the city commission. Three of us will have the opportunity to continue to work on behalf of the community. But the thing that's great is these are all six people that you see constantly, whether they're on your city commission or you're not, they're all involved in your community and serving us. And so ultimately what you're going to do is go to the ballots, whether it's this week or next week or on election day on the 7th and choose three of us to represent you and help guide the city as an organization and guide the community in a leadership capacity for future growth and future success. Look for opportunities to succeed. Look for people that you can believe in. Most importantly, look for people that you can communicate with. That's the key. The job that we've done for the last four years, Bobby and I, that Steve's done for the last two years, we can only be successful if we hear from you. So make sure you keep coming out, keep talking to us, email, phone, whoever it is. In 10 days, it's elected to the city commission, we're all here to serve you and that's our role.
Mr. Wade.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up today and that being educated on who you vote is the most important thing. I'd also like to thank those that put the event on and I really want to serve you guys. I think I can help make Emporia a better place to live, work and raise a family. I love this community just like Rob does and I think it's a wonderful one. I could never imagine living anywhere else. And please vote on April 7th or before. And please vote on April 7th or before. Thank you.
Ms. Mendoza.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out. It's nice to see you guys out here supporting us. I know I'm different than most of the candidates for the city commission. I also think that's my strength. I feel I represent the true Emporia, the majority of citizens who work hard, two or three jobs, and still struggle to get by. They need a voice, and I want to be that voice for them, and I'd appreciate your vote on April 7th. Thank you.
And finally, Mr. Harmon.
I want to thank Commissioner Gilligan for thanking everybody so eloquently. That was outstanding, and he has a passion for Emporia that we all have. He's just outstanding at speaking, and I think he summed it all up for all six of us on what really matters in the city of Emporia. So I'm going to focus on another area, which is, you know, you look at past performance, that's a good predictor of future performance. So I'd like to just highlight some of the things that have happened in the last few years on the city commission that we should be proud of as current city commissioners and those that are in the audience that are in the city commission. We've had very frugal budgets. One of the first things we did when I came on was to make sure we had a city management team that we all could trust, that we knew would take care of our tax dollars, and would look us in the eye, and we would say, they're telling us what's really going on, they're telling us the truth, we can count on them to implement what we need to have happen in the city of Emporia. So we're very proud of having a good management team in place. The second thing is, we looked at developing a five-year rolling budget, which Commissioner Milner talked about earlier. That's crucial. By having a five-year rolling budget, we're able to forecast major equipment and overhead and capital expenses that you can't always do in a 12-month period. By having a five-year horizon, we're able to save money for the taxpayer, and that's already paying off as you look at some of the bids we've had the last 12 months. Our bids are coming in lower than what we predicted. We're saving money for the taxpayer. We've also managed to come together as a team and identify two-year goals that are measurable, and those goals aren't just for your five city commissioners. Those are goals that are spread throughout your city staff and through the agencies and the organizations that are funded by taxpayers, and we have quite a few. We're able to show progress. We're able to look at those goals and say, this is what we're working on, this is our weaknesses, this is where we still need to go. And I know that the next city commission will continue those two-year goals. Finally, we've been able to improve the transparency for the voter and the taxpayer. You can get online right now and find out where every single penny has been spent for the city of Emporia, and that's never happened before. So the city staff has worked very hard at that. If you're interested, go to the website, go to the budget page, and spend the next 16 hours, and you'll discover where every penny has gone, and it's truly amazing how you can get down to the individual checks. Finally, like Commissioner Gilligan said, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Thank you to those of you that are at home for skipping the WSU game and watching us perform up here tonight. It's a beautiful day outside. I know you could have been somewhere else, but you were here, and that shows you care about the city of Emporia. I know votes are not given freely. I appreciate the chance to have served as a city commissioner. I hope to get your vote again, and I hope to have the chance to serve you in the future. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank all of the candidates and thank all of you for coming. It's great to see democracy in action. I hope you'll all go and take a little of this extra time to go read the budget, or not. But thank you all for coming. It's been a great evening, and come out and vote on April 7th.